Council Agenda, Township of Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting of August 7th, 2018.
Posting of Notice, an adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the township clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the municipal building and on the municipal website on July 16th, 2018, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in the Daily Record on July 19th, 2018, and was forwarded by fax to other local newspapers on July 16th, 2018. Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Public Access Channel 21 at 7:00 PM Sundays and Wednesdays and are also available for viewing at www.parcipony.net.
Please rise for the flag salute. Mrs. Grignani, if you would.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Here.
Ms. McCarthy?
Here.
Ms. Grignani?
Present.
Mr. Carriffi?
Here.
Also in attendance are Business Administrator Ellen Sandman, Township Attorney Jim Lott, and the Township Clerk Colette Madden. Mr. President, we have a quorum. You may begin.
Thank you. Upcoming meetings, August 21st, 2018, 7:30 PM, regular meeting; September 11th, 2018, at 7:30 PM, agenda meeting. Approval of minutes, presentations, reports, Township Council.
Just one quick report, if I may. Precipity Child Daycare Center had their 50th anniversary celebration, and I made the presentation from the Township Council congratulating them on their 50 years.
Thank you. I just have actually a question for the Business Administrator.
Yes.
Ellen, now that the budget's been approved and passed, when are the employees, their contracts, now, when are they going to get their, I'd like to see them get their raises and their retro checks as soon as possible. Is that...
Yeah, we're actually working on it. People are now sending in, it has to go through a process, which is a PA form.
Right.
I signed about 10 of them today. And again, it has that effective date as of July 1, just for the record, and we're moving as quickly as possible as we can do that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we are in the process of doing that.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Sure.
I received several calls from residents. We note in our posting of notice and the note that we have our video available to our residents, the last video that has been on our Precipity Township official website, June 13th, 2018, and...
I can comment on that, actually.
Please.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Right now, there's two things going on. One, they're in transition, they're in the process of getting a new web host, that's the first thing, so that's the holdup. But the other thing is, is I think there's been some technical difficulties over with, what's the name of this company?
Alpha Dog. Alpha Dog.
And yeah, we're in the process of correcting it, and we hope that all the videos will be up within the next 24 to 48 hours, max. So if anything I can do about it, it'll probably be up by tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, you're very welcome.
Thank you. Township Attorney, Mr. Lott?
I have my report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Business Administrator, Mrs. Sandman?
I have one item for discussion, but I also have one point of order. I just wanted to announce that December 1st will be my retirement date. I will be retiring as of December 1st. I've enjoyed my wonderful stay here in Precipity. As I just said to Jasmine, I said, you know that saying when they say, you know, you never find something you love and you never, you know, work a day in your life? I did, however, paraphrase it and said, maybe a couple of days I worked in Precipity. Maybe a good couple of days, but in the end, it's all about people and working together and being joyous in what you do. Sorry, and again, I'm gonna...
Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. I will make some, I was gonna say parting shots, but I, no, I digress. No, parting, you know, as we get closer, but because of the change and bringing in someone new, you know, a little bit for the transition, I thought it was appropriate for me to announce that this evening. As I said, I will be still here, as Nixon said, to kick around a little bit, but I look forward to continue to doing the job. As I said to the mayor, I said, you know, for 44 years, every morning when I wake up, I wake up with a sense of urgency and a sense of dedication to what we do. It's not always easy, but that's the right thing to do. So again, I leave you with that. One of the things we've been working on as far as bringing in funds for the town and doing, trying to think outside the box, we've talked about gov deals. And what gov deals is, is the fact that we can sell on the, you know, it goes out throughout the whole United States, and people, you know, buy our old police equipment and vehicles and computers. And at this point in the auction, we're about $48,000 plus in, $48,000 that comes directly to the town, and the other part of it, it cleans up, it gets, it removes the vehicles, the equipment away from and gives us space, and the equipment is removed by the person who bids on the property. So we're very lucky in that, and my intern has been working dedicat... I had thought I would have a report that I could present to the council, but what I will do is tomorrow, you will get a copy of where we are with that. Oh, you have it?
Thank you.
It was in my folder.
Oh.
Yeah, it's in the back.
Okay. Well, I have a very good intern who failed to mention in that part to me that he already did it. Let me see if I was honestly remembering $48,000. $48,000, and, you know, I like, I really have a good memory from numbers. Let's be exact here, 48,000.
Not just for numbers.
Right, oh, thank you. $48,275.99, so you know that this is a real number. So anyway, I'm glad that he did that. I was, yeah, I just said to the clerk, I said, gee, that's not SAF, but there it is, so. Thank you.
Well, Ellen, I would like to thank you for your years of service and dedication. I personally will miss you.
Yes, we all will.
No, no, it's not time. I just think because of the change, you know, we'll do that, we'll do that.
You just wanted to hear it twice, didn't you?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely, Council President. You found me out.
I just want to thank you too, but I'll thank you again.
Yeah, thank me again.
And everybody thanks you.
I know, you know what? The wonderful thing about working with all different kinds of people is, in this business, you never get a big head. They always kind of let you know, and you know what? It has served me well, so, thank you.
Township Clerk?
Yeah, two things. One, I'll quickly thank you, and then we'll save the rest for later, Ellen. And then, just two things very quickly. I believe it's August 21st, the next meeting day. We are setting up for a shred-it. This is not a shred-it for the town, this is a shred-it for, you know, our township here. As you guys know, I'm in charge of the archives, and since I've come on, one of the things that we've had to do was get the archives in order. Since then, I think we've destroyed about 1,500 boxes. We're probably due to destroy this August 21st, another 200 to 300 boxes. And also, as you guys may or may not be aware, we're also in the process of getting the entire township on scanning. This way, we can try to be paper-light, and we won't have to deal with this archive situation going forward in the future. And thus far, since I've been here, we have been able to get the mayor's office administration, the clerk's office, fire prevention, housing, and zoning, all on scanning. So this is going to be more beneficial to the township, as it's going to allow them to be able to easier access records, and it's going to be easier for you guys out there, residents, in the event that you guys want to request any records. It'll be much easier for us to, you know, get them to you in a much quicker timeframe. But that's all I have. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Township Officers, Committees?
None of these.
Engineering Report. Knoll Road Improvement Project. Construction of the Knoll Road Improvement Project is continuing, and we anticipate the work will be substantially complete by the end of August. No council action required. Lake Precipity Road Improvements, Phase 6 project. Construction of the sixth phase of the Lake Precipity Road Improvement Project is started. Work will continue through the end of September. No council action required. 2018 Road Resurfacing Project. The milling and resurfacing of various streets throughout the township has commenced. In addition to resurfacing the roadways, the contractor will also be repairing a damaged curb and replacing handicap ramps where needed within the project limits. All work is expected to be substantially complete by October. No council action required. Old Bloomfield Ave, Phase 1 project. The first phase of the Old Bloomfield Ave project is in construction. The project is about 50% complete, and we anticipate all work will be done by early September. No council action required. Moraine Area Streets, Phase 2 project. The second phase of this project is started, and construction activity will increase in the next few weeks. All work is expected to be substantially complete by the end of October. No council action required. Mount Tabor Area Streets, Phase 3 Improvement Project. The contractor will be starting this project in the next few weeks. Work will continue through the end of the construction season. No council action required. Endorsement of the NJDOT Transportation Enhancement Grants. We are in the process of preparing and submitting grant applications through the NJDOT Transportation Alternatives Set Asides Grant Program. The applications are for the Streetscape and Traffic Calming Improvements on North Beverick Road, from Claudine Terrace to Seneca Ave, and roadway improvements by Knollwood School. Resolutions endorsing the applications will need to be adopted by the Township Council. Endorsement of the NJDOT Safe Routes to Schools Grant. We are in the process of preparing and submitting grant applications through the NJDOT Safe Routes to Schools Grant Program. The applications are for improvements around schools, for safer access, particularly for drop-off and pickup in front of Knollwood School and Streetscape. Improvements along North Beverick Road. Resolutions endorsing the applications will need to be adopted by the Township Council.
Council President, we will coordinate that with the clerk and with engineering and with our grants folks. We have meetings to make sure that those resolutions are made in a timely fashion.
Great, thank you. Okay, presentation. At this time, we're going to have a presentation by Craftsman Farms.
Upper right, upper right.
You're the upper right.
That's the right one.
No, I'm kidding. You know what you're talking about. I was thinking...
I think we made a few more, a few more in the back.
And while Vonda's doing that, I want to say something on behalf of Vonda. She too wakes up with a sense of urgency about Craftsman Farms and is dedicated to that, and that's true, so it's, I wanted to share that.
I just think...
Yes, I think so, because you're very soft-spoken.
Well, in addition to Vonda and Barbara, we have a bunch of trustees in the next row, and welcome.
Yes, you know who you are. No.
Hello?
There you go.
There you go. Okay, I have to see the screen, so I'm going to stand over here, and then you can just look at the screen and not look at me, so we'll be good. So I, everybody in the back can hear, I can't tell how loud I am, so if I'm overpowering you, let me know. Okay, I'm Vonda Givens, I'm the Executive Director of the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms, and I want to thank you all for having me today. This is our annual presentation to the Town Council. I'll explain why we do this in a minute, but I want to acknowledge that our Board President, Barbara Weisskettle, is here, and we have current and former board members as well, and volunteers, and we have a little group of people supporting us here tonight, so I want to thank you all for coming out and showing your support. So, in this, this is, I realize this is my fifth time to make this presentation, so I'm going to try to stay focused and not wander too much, so that I can keep everybody that's rolling along and keep everybody focused on it. So what I usually do is talk a little bit about the past and how we got to today, and then I have exciting news about the future, tomorrow, what we're going to be doing in the future. And I can say, this is one of the few times that I am before the council, not asking for money, so I feel like we should make a note of that. So this is a rare, a rare circumstance, it doesn't mean I might not come back, but in my five times, this is my fifth time up here, that's an unusual circumstance. So, the yesterday part, I'm going to breeze through today, because if you haven't been to Craftsman Farms, or you haven't toured the Stickley Museum, I want to invite you to do that. This is a photograph from 1911, and you can see Gustav Stickley pictured here. This was his property, it was 650 acres in 1911, a family home, a working farm, a school, a community. And Stickley was quite an innovator and an entrepreneur, and he had a business that was built on home furnishings and architecture. It was a pretty extraordinary story, so I do want to encourage you to come and visit. You'll learn all about it. Stickley lived on the property from 1911 till 1917, and he left in 1917, he sold the property to a family named Farney. The Farneys lived there until, or at least owned the property until the 80s. And in that time period, Stickley had been famous in his lifetime, and then he sort of disappeared from popular memory, and then reemerged with force in the 60s and 70s. People were really interested in Stickley and Craftsman Farms, and that helped propel interest in saving Craftsman Farms. So in 1988, I feel like I'm in the, maybe I'm standing at a place where it's squealing, right? Or is it just to me? Just to me? Okay, great, then it's only disturbing to me. So Craftsman Farms was saved from development in 1989, and it came about after a resurgence of interest in Stickley. There were people who knew what Craftsman Farms was and were interested in saving the site. An open space fund was set up to be able to pay fair market value to the Farney family, and then the township purchased the property in 1989. At that same time, the Craftsman Farms Foundation, which is today known as the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms, was set up, and our responsibility is to restore, preserve, and interpret the site. The next year, it opened to the public, and it was designated a National Historic Landmark, and there was a lot of years in between, but I'll skip ahead to 2007. It was kind of a watershed year, and it had come after several really difficult years, but there were two things that happened that year that are important to our partnership with the township. One is a 25-year operating agreement was established. Up to that point, there were five-year agreements, and one of the great things about a 25-year operating agreement is it allows you to go outside of the township. We can ask for help with capital projects from the township, but we can also go outside of the township, because other people can tell that we have a stable relationship with the township, so they see that the ownership of the property is in stable condition, that the partnership with the township we have is going to continue for 25 years. We also got funding for our Historic Site Master Plan. That's basically your playbook for how you're going to move forward in the future, your vision for the property, and it's really hard to get preservation funding without a Historic Site Master Plan. So you can see that those two things propelled us to where we're headed today, where we are now in 2018. So if you haven't been to Craftsman Farms or haven't been there lately, I thought I would show you this map of the property in the Stickley era. So down here, you see there's Route 10, okay, so you can orient yourself. This is, it's called on the map, the Erie-Lacawanna Line, which is today New Jersey Transit. Manor Lane today is right in here, but you can see it didn't exist yet, and this is the original driveway that still goes through the property. So the 650 acres and 12 buildings in Stickley's era is now 30 acres and nine buildings, and it's pretty remarkable that there are nine, if you think about it. That's a lot of buildings that still remain, and really, the Farney family lived there for more than 70 years, and they made mostly cosmetic changes, so it really still bears the mark of Stickley on the property. So let's take a close-up look at this, so just so I can kind of orient everybody. If you've been to Craftsman Farms before, the parking lot is where the orchard was in Stickley's time. And we focus in on, the heart of the property is the log house, which is what people tour today, the annex, which is where our educational programs are held. The North Cottage, South Cottage, White Cottage, and the log house make up the four residences on the site, and then there's a garage building, that is where the administrative office is today. So we're going to come back to that, I'll talk about that more. So here are pictures of the buildings, just so you can imagine what they look like if you haven't been there, and then the farm buildings. They are horse barn, a milkhouse, a dairy barn, that's the ruins. For those of you who've been in Precipity a while, you probably recall that there was a barn there until the 1970s, and it burned at that time, and it remained, the ruins remain. There's also a calf barn, that's now our caretaker's home, and here are pictures, except for the caretaker's home, I didn't do that because it's a private home. So what do we do? So I mentioned before that we have an operating agreement with the township, and our responsibility is to oversee preservation of the site. Nine buildings, 30 acres, following the standards set by the Secretary of the Interior, which is a tall order, it's hard to do that. We oversee operations with means that we make sure the building is, the Craftsman Farms is available for public use, and interpretation, which is really about educating people about the site itself, about Stickley, about its connection to Precipity, anything and everything related to how we can educate people about Craftsman Farms. Here's our mission, which is online, you can read it there. These are our strategic plan goals, and you can see there that it's time to get back to planning again, so these go through 2018, and we are in the process of reviewing those and developing our next five-year strategic plan. So today, we are open year-round, Thursday to Sunday, and that means we do more than 800 tours per year. That's on top of programs like Girl Scout workshops, special tours, lectures, trips, all kinds of programs. I asked our education manager today how many we'd done so far this year, and she said 36, maybe she missed one or two. We're a little bit behind, because remember March? It was kind of a rough month. We were closed for seven days, we had a lot of Girl Scout programs canceled, we couldn't reschedule them all, so we're a little bit behind so far. We serve an average of 10,000 people per year, and it might interest you to know that our, we have a core volunteer crew of about 50 or so, and if you include people who volunteer for us, more broadly outside of this community, people who help us, who work on our board, it goes to about 75 people. So a lot of people are interested in how we're funded. So we are self-funded, our budget is $500,000. That self-funding covers our seven-member staff, that's three full-time people and four part-time people, all of our educational programs and our operational activities. We, because we're owned by the township, we can, we get resources, we can ask for help from the township for resources, like the Parks and Forest Street Department is a great help with maintaining our property. If we have problems, and we often do with our water lines freezing in the winter, we can go to the Buildings Department and ask for help with that. And so we have a really nice, very helpful partnership with the township, but everything else we do is, we have to raise the money for it. So we have memberships, we apply for grants, we have a grant from the state of New Jersey, it's called a GOS grant, that's a general operating support, it goes towards salaries, and there's a lot of work that's required to maintain that, to meet the standards for it, and to maintain, and then to report on it. We also do fundraising. We have an annual gala every year that raises a fourth of our income. It's a lot of pressure, again, but that and our annual fund is about half of our, raises about half of our budget per year. We also have earned income. We have a museum shop, we have admissions, we have educational programs. So there's a lot of ways that we go about raising that $500,000. Some years, it's easier than others, and it is something that really keeps us, that sense of urgency that Ellen was talking about, I feel that most days. So back to this, what our job is, that with response, with regard to our partnership with the township. So to me, that looks a lot more like that. So we were talking, I was saying that there's preservation, operations, and interpretation. This is what it really looks like on the ground. I think of these two things, operations and preservation, operations and interpretation are kind of the same thing. We open to the public, we mostly educate the public. So operations and interpretation are essentially the same operation for me. Preservation is something different, but equally important. So there, I think of them as kind of two gears, and they need to always be in motion. If one stops, the other doesn't work right either. So preservation, for instance, is about trying to preserve buildings, decide how far you want to take their restoration, and figure out how to use them to serve the future, the present day and the future of the museum. So for instance, if you can get more of the nine buildings open for the museum to use in some function, in some way, then that serves the museum and allows the museum to have more abilities to build revenue. If you build more revenue, that makes the staff stronger, and a strong staff is really what you need to make sure you're doing preservation properly. You need to make sure that you're strategizing. With nine buildings, figuring out what to do, when to do it, which to do first, is a really hard thing to do, it requires a lot of help from, not just me, I get help from a lot of people. So these are two gears that are equally important, and they take up most of my time, but if they're working properly in motion, then they're really serving something that's much bigger and more important than really why we do what we do. So our ultimate goal is to be a community resource, and if all of these gears are in motion, the kinds of things that I envision happening are what means to be a community resource, and I want to take a closer look at that. So in my mind, it's a variety of things that we can do to serve the community, but you might think of other things as well, but I wanted to hit on a few of these. So local economic impact. I just wanted to show some data that we had collected from visitors. We asked them to fill out a five-question survey, and one of the interesting things we've learned, this is from our year, just this past year, 2016 to 2017, we collected a nice-sized sample of 325 surveys, and of those, we received 325 responses to this, the question of any, what are people doing in the area aside from visiting Craftsman Farms? So they were coming on a tour of Craftsman Farms, so what else, if anything, are you doing in the area? So 165 people said they're just coming to visit Craftsman Farms, but 171 people were doing other things in the area, mostly dining, but 37% were doing two or more activities in the area. So that indicates that we have a pretty good impact on our community, and that we could grow that as well. So it's mostly lunch that people are looking to have in the area, but there might be, as we expand our activities, there may be other opportunities too. Facilities. So those of you who may vote in the district, District 4 and 39, know that you vote at Craftsman Farms. We also have rooms available for things like Girl Scout meetings. This is something that we can grow as we grow as an organization. Quality of life is a little hard, it's kind of intangible, it's a little hard to measure, but it is something that is important to think about as a community, and the kind of life that you want people in the community to have, and how we can contribute to that. We have hosted Fall Family Day for the past 12 years. It's a big event for our organization, we usually have around 500 people on site that day, and the idea of the program is to bring multi-generations together. I call it screen-free time. The idea is to play silly games, paint pumpkins, do hayrides, spend time together, and just play, and it's one of the few opportunities that I've known of in the area where parents will say to me that they can just let their preschooler just run on the property and feel comfortable that their child is safe. That is an intangible thing, that's hard to know what the value of that is, but we're really about trying to build family memories and memories of your community, and I often say at this presentation, I'm from a small town outside of Nashville, Tennessee, and I'm really proud of that. And, and you know, you want to have kids grow up in a community that they're proud to be a part of, and so we think we can contribute to that. We have an active Facebook page, a lot of followers. A lot of it has ended up being about pretty pictures, and you know what? That's what works, so we had such a long winter that I started taking a picture every week of the magnolia tree on the property, and the last week, we had a lot of responses to it. We boosted it on Facebook, and it got shared a whole bunch of times, so that's another intangible, you know, I can see that a lot of people saw it, but you know, there's something valuable about just something to see that is inspiring or comforting to look at at the end of the day. It's also a nice place to take a walk, even in a snowstorm. And the last couple on my list are a resource for sharing local heritage and history, and a source of pride and international exposure. I'm just going to take these two together. If you're not aware, during the months of July and August, if you come on Thursdays, you get Dollar Mission if you're a Precipity resident, so you can come and learn more about Craftsman Farms. We also host a Fall Family Day, as I mentioned before. It focuses on the harvest, and Craftsman Farms was a dairy, just like a lot of the farms in the area up through the 1950s, so it's a way that we can engage kids with the history of this area. We have free open house on Sunday, October 14th, it's a good time to see the property, you don't have to pay to get in. And I just wanted to show you a graph of visitors, where they come from, from across the United States. The same surveys that we did, we collected information about where people were coming from, so 25 states and five countries, 394 zip codes indicate, this is a pretty good spread, indicated that there were 250 from New Jersey, and 86 of those were from Morris County. That's based on my anecdotal knowledge, that's a pretty good representation of the visitors we get. We have members of the museum from all over the country, and 20-member libraries, so Precipity Library, you can go and you can check out the member card and come for free for a visit. We were featured on NJTV's Drive By History, we were chosen as a Hidden Gem of New Jersey Historic Sites by NJ Family. There was this great series called BestOfNewJersey.com, and they did this series, BestOfNewJersey.com did a series called Jersey Through History, and they featured it on Facebook, and they got this huge response, and I want to know how they did that, but 248 shares of this posting about our site, so that's pretty neat. This is an internet, this is a national arts and crafts collector... got this huge response to it, I want to know how they did that, but 248 shares of this posting about our, our site, so that's pretty neat. This is an internet, this is a national arts and crafts collector website and our recent lighting project was featured last week. And I gave a tour last week and somebody asked me about our TripAdvisor page and I decided to use a screenshot this time. We have 90 reviews on TripAdvisor, so if you want to see what people think about touring Craftsman Farms, you can check it there. Really proud of our 4.5 out of 5 rating and I noticed when I got this screenshot that we have a certificate of excellence. I don't think that's something you can try to get unless you just get it, so I don't even know where it came from, but I'm happy about that. Now, a little bit of news about tomorrow and I, I think there's a lot we want to be celebrating about tomorrow. So I want to go ahead and mention that next year, we're celebrating our 30th anniversary and that's 30 years of partnership with the township, it's 30 years since the Stickley Museum at Craftsman Farms was established. And that's 30 years of demonstrating that the property's significance. I feel like, I just want to note, because this is what I do every day, you may not be aware that up in Syracuse, Stickley's house there, he moved away from Syracuse to New Jersey and then after he left Craftsman Farms, he went back to Syracuse. His home in Syracuse is finally getting preserved, it's getting a lot of attention, it's been in the news a lot and I think that's great and if they're listening to me now, I think it's great, but I just want to acknowledge that Stickley had one dream home, he had one property that he established to be his ideal home and it was right here in Parsippany, New Jersey. There's a museum that's being built down in Florida, the, the Museum of the American Arts and Crafts Movement, it's very impressive, I got to take a hard hat tour. It's a really great place, it will teach people like we do about Gustav Stickley, but we are still the authentic home of Gustav Stickley and we want to make sure we position ourselves so that, that's clear. So if people are interested in the arts and crafts movement, they know they really have to come to Parsippany to see this home. So, to that end, what we're always doing is trying to make improvements to the site, improve our operations and also keep preserving the site. We have recently installed exterior lighting and those of you who heard this presentation before know that this has been coming, we've been working on this for a few years, we finally finished, we're actually close to finishing, tomorrow we'll finish for, for good, hopefully. This project was funded with, you can see a couple of grants over the last few years. We also, last year, removed asbestos, installed a new fire and security alarm, we repaired roof leaks, which has come in really handy during all of the rain and over this summer, who would have thought we'd have so much rain? So we've done a lot of really good work that came from my presentation last year, asking for help with a lot of the issues we had in 2017. I just wanted to highlight the lighting project for a second. It was really interesting because we were going to trench across the property and we used it as an opportunity to also do an archaeological study. So you can see the initial dig that helped us to get some basic information we needed about this, the site and the dig that would help us as we dug the trenches around the property. So I'm not going to go into details about what we learned about the, the dig, but it was fascinating, continues to unfold. And we did find things from the Stickley era in, in the digs, so that's really all you can hope for. So, we did the archaeological dig, this is the map of the lighting. It is, has been, my entire time at Craftsman Farms, very dark at night, it's difficult to have evening programs. We had, we still do have evening programs, but honestly, in the winter, when it gets dark and there's black ice on the, the road, it's, it's dangerous to do it. So it's really exciting to finally have this lighting. We were able to do about half of the lighting, so everything along this line. And this is a picture of the lighting, this is a picture of the property in the Stickley era and there's a close-up here of what the lights looked like on the Stickley era on the property and here are the reproduction lights. So they look pretty good. So we're really pleased with that and that's another, that's a great way of explaining how preservation, you know, we're preserving, lighting the property in a, the way that references Stickley, but we're also doing that so we can have more programs and raise more revenue. And finally, the big exciting news is that we are finally breaking ground on a new education center. And this is really exciting to be able to finally say this, I had thought last year that we were going to break ground and now I can really give you a date for when we're going to do it. So for those of you who have been following along with this process, this is what we usually call the administration building, we have newly named it, the, the new education center. You can see here is the back of the, the building and the front of the building, which is really the gateway to the property. So this is the current building that you see when you arrive on the property, this is where, the first building that visitors see, but they will come and see this entrance here. The back part of the, the building will become our new education space, the new voting space and it's a space that we'll be able to share with members of the community who want to use it for meetings. This is the earliest-known photo of that building and it gives you an idea, it was a lot bigger than it is currently today, it burned in 1950. So here's some pictures of it after the fire. So it, what was interesting about it is the original stone foundation did not burn, it was not badly damaged, so that's really where the garage was. And the upper floors burned and what they rebuilt and its place was a one-floor with two apartments. So the building had been quite a bit bigger, so what we'd like to do is re-envision that building for the future. The ground level will have a lot of space, a lot, will more than double our current education program space, which is a huge advantage to us for, we've been turning away children and adults for programs for years. Our first level is the office space, which is not usually that interesting to most people, but it will make for much, much more efficient office space, which means that we can actually have room to grow. Right now, we're maxed out of the space. And we're going to rebuild the upper level and what's important to that is there's a significant area that will be given to archive storage and to being able to store our papers, Khaled was just talking about archives and materials. So we have a lot of photographs, books, our, our own archives and it's, we need proper storage for it. Right now, everything is stored in the log house, it's heavy, it's a lot of weight for that building, but it's also really hard to maintain the proper humidity levels to really be sure that we're going to protect all these documents for the future. So this is a big leap forward for our collection storage, too. So, the new education center is, is, as I said, it's a big leap forward, it expands our ability to do programs, it's a fitting interest to a national, entrance to a national historic landmark, it increases our facilities, it improves our storage space, it expands our office space, there's just a lot of things that we'll be able to accomplish and it is exciting to be able to announce it. So it's really, what we're going to be able to do is really back to those gears, you know, it's getting all of them working so that we can be a strong community resource and we can be a place that the community appreciates and wants to be a part of and there's an understanding of what preservation can really do for a community. So, just to worry about the funding. So you can see, I listed all of the, the time, these are the resolutions related to this building. As I've said, I've come here several times asking for funding and in 2016, we presented this idea to, to the council, we had, we really started in 2013, looking at expanding our facilities and how we would do that. And we asked for seed money to begin doing feasibility studies and trying to figure out how we might expand. By 2016, it had taken us a while to really develop a vision that we thought was right and we came and asked for help with the administration building, now the education center, and expected to break ground last year. And last year, as we were preparing to start construction, we got our final estimate and realized, to really move forward, we needed to raise more money. So we could either shrink our vision back, we took a long time to develop it, we could either go back and, and build a building that we didn't really want and we certainly not the building we said we were going to build, or we could take the next six or seven months and try to come up with the money that we needed. So, one thing we did was I came back to the council and to the administration and said, "We asked for funding for a variety of projects in 2017, we did some of those, but we really think the rest of that funding should go toward this building. If we don't build it now, we're not going to build it." So we have, have got a really huge boost from the township of support for this project and that has been a big help with being able to go elsewhere for funding. So we, earlier this year, went to the county, I wrote a grant, we, that requires, it's a long process, you know, because you've been throughout yourself with the county, because the township also got a grant from the county. We found out a couple of weeks ago that we had received a grant of $355,000 for the lower portion, the ground-level portion of the building. So with that, we've also been doing our own fundraising and this is a first for us. Normally, we raise $500,000 a year, that's our big goal, so this year, we've been also trying to, at the same time, raise money for this building. And what we said to our donors who have been watching us along all these 30 years is, "The time is now. The township has, has given us support, the township has helped us get this county grant, so we need help from you to be able to move forward with the project." Because anybody who's done this knows that it's, that the least expensive day to build a building is today, it only gets more expensive as the days go by. So we don't want to let this building go out of our grasp. So you can see that we have been fundraising, we currently have a one-time estate gift and donations received in, in 2018 of $85,000. We're still taking pledges and we're really kind of at the beginning, but we have enough money to start the project and so we plan to do that soon. You can see here the full budget for the project. We know that construction, we expect construction to be 2.25 million. With architecture and contingency fees, it's more like 2.5, 2.6. To do everything, you still have to furnish the building, landscape the building, we have to move the staff out, have temporary offices, there's a lot involved in it, so we're anticipating up to 2.8 million for it. So, the construction will begin right after Thanksgiving, the Monday after Thanksgiving and then we're going to have our official groundbreaking a couple of weeks later. So if the ground is frozen on December 12th, we will have already started and we'll be able to move forward with the project, but we'll get everybody together to celebrate in, in December. Now, I don't want to go out on a sour note, but I do, I feel like it would be irresponsible for me not to acknowledge that we're, we're really gung-ho on this one building, but we have nine buildings total. And I'm not asking for money tonight, but that doesn't mean that there's not a lot of anticipated needs and there's not a lot that we might need to come back for. So I mentioned, there's 30 acres, we have a small pond that, the dam that is a part of that pond is not in good shape and it hasn't been for a long time, we need to figure out what to do about it. That we need to pave and line the parking lot, we need help with signage, we need to do building preservation. The biggest issue for us, ahead of us, is in 2020, we need to replace our HVAC system. It's been, it's more than 20 years old and they're, they're notoriously finicky anyway, so we have until 2020 and then we really have to replace the system and it'll probably cost $100,000 to do it. So a lot coming, but also a lot to celebrate. And I want to just envision the way we think about Craftsman Farms and just the last little bit I want to say is, you know, I've mentioned all of these buildings that we have here, right, and the new building that we're building. And in our minds, we're not talking about way into the future, I'm talking five to 10 years, here is what I think we can be. Imagine a spring morning with a walking tour of the property and then a school bus arrives with kids in third or fourth grade who are learning about their local heritage, or maybe it's a group of woodworking students from vocational school who are learning about Stickley's furnishings. And then we open to the public at noon and then later on, there's a storytime in the North Cottage. And all this time, there's been an artist who's working in the South Cottage and visitors can stop by and watch the artist at work. Or there's a Girl Scout workshop that goes on as soon as school lets out in the new education center. And there's a scholar who's been studying our ceramics, our ceramics over in the White Cottage and is staying for the week to be able to do research. In the evening, we have an evening tour, one of our popular evening tours, or maybe we host a wine tasting and we rent out the space for somebody else to do it. The idea is that we are a busy, active, dynamic place from morning to night. Thank you.
Council President, three comments if I may?
Yes.
I had the pleasure of being on the Town Council in 1989 when the township acquired that property. In fact, we actually started around 1975 to see what we could do to acquire the property. That's number one. Number two, I've worked in many organizations over the last 54 years and in almost all those organizations, 10% of the people did 90% of the work. That's not true with this group of people right here. The trustees, the volunteers, the docents, the committee members, everyone in this organization works 100% of the time. No slouches in this group at all, it's, it's a pleasure to work with them. I'm a liaison and a trustee and I enjoy being with all of them. And the third thing is, it's not only historic site, Craftsman Farms is a landmark. Now, there's thousands of historic sites in New Jersey, there are very few landmarks. Now, the Statue of Liberty is a landmark. Well, Craftsman Farms is a landmark and has that status, too. So that's very, very impressive. Just thought I would mention those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to bids taken, July 12th, 2018 Craftsman Park Improvements.
You want to give them a few minutes to leave first, if anyone wants to leave?
Oh, sure. If anyone wants to leave now, after that presentation?
Unless you really want to stay and listen to all of us.
Good answer.
If they don't stay, you didn't tell them, if they don't stay, it may affect the funding?
Okay, we can move on with it. Okay, bids taken, July 12th, 2018 Craftsman Park Improvements, July 31st, 2018 lease of public property, to be taken, none quotations, proposals, qualifications. At this time, I entertain a motion to open up the public hearing.
Motion.
Second, Grignani.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mrs. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffi?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is open to the public on any matter.
Okay, if you'd like to come up, please state your name and address, sign in, you'll be given five minutes. Okay, so no one come forward, entertain a motion?
This is open to the public.
I'm assuming that most of you are here to talk about the RCW?
You have to come up, sign in, the microphone.
Well, yeah, well, if they're going to be talking about the RCW, the, the, that's coming up for hearing as well, so we'll, we'll have them speak on that separately. But Councilmember DePiero is correct, you can speak on it now, but it's probably more appropriate to talk about it when that ordinance come up for the hearing, so this way the touch, it's coming up, yes, this evening, absolutely, sir.
Okay, so no one come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mrs. Grignani, roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffi?
Yes.
Okay, the floor is closed.
Thank you. Ordinances, status of adopted ordinances, ordinance 2018:08, adopted July 24th, mayoral action July 25th, effective date August 20th. Ordinance 2018:09, adopted July 24th, mayoral action July 25th, effective date August 20th. Introduction, ordinance 2018:15, Mr. DePiero?
Ordinance 2008:15, an ordinance of the township, of, council of the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending Chapter 4, Administration of Government of the Code of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, related to the appointment of special law enforcement officers. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on first reading at a meeting of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 7th, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for a second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August 21st, 2018, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon thereafter as a matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Second.
Who seconded that?
Second.
Okay, so motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mrs. Grignani?
No.
No.
Sorry, I apologize, Mrs. McCarthy, and I was looking right at you, too.
Just a correction to be technical, this says motion to approve above resolution is written here, but it should be, motion to approve the above ordinance.
You are absolutely correct, I'm going to blame one of my staff members on that one, no, I'm just kidding, it was my fault, so I'm sorry. I apologize for the typo. Okay, so a motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Ms. McCarthy, roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffi?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ordinance 2018:16, an ordinance establishing white-collar salary ranges. Be it resolved that the above ordinance be introduced, read by title and passed on the first reading at the meeting of the Town Council of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills, held on August 7th, 2018, and that said ordinance be further considered for second reading and final passage at a meeting to be held on August 21st, 2018, at 7:30 PM prevailing time, or as soon, or as soon thereafter as the matter may be reached at the municipal building in said township, at which time all persons interested shall be given the opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized and directed to advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DePiero.
Again, ordinance. It's ordinance.
Oh, man, they're going to really be in trouble in the office. No, I'm sorry, it won't happen again. So, motion made by Mrs. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving on to page six. Mrs. Grignani?
Ordinance 2018:12, an ordinance of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, Morris County, New Jersey, amending and supplementing Chapter 430, zoning related to permitted accessory uses and structures in the RCW Recreation, Conservation, and Wildlife District. The notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Parsippany, Troy Hills, on June 22nd, 2018. This ordinance was introduced at the June 19th, 2018 regular meeting. Bless you. Motion to accept that ordinance, 2018:12, be heard in its second and final reading by title only. Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Grignani, seconded by Ms. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Motion to open the public hearing for ordinance 2018:12 by myself?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Grignani, seconded by Mr. DePiero. Roll call, Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes. The floor is open now to the public for anyone that would like to speak about this, the RCW, the zoning issue.
If you do come up, please state your name and address, sign in. You'll be given five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just some preliminary remarks about the ordinance that is the subject of public hearing tonight. As a result of a litigation that was filed by Wildlife Preserves against the township which challenged several township zoning actions from 2014, 2015, we were able to reach an amicable settlement where we agreed to propose an amendment to the RCW Zone District for properties that are in common ownership of at least 200 contiguous acres. And the purpose of the amendment would be to establish an accessory use standard for those tracts that would permit a number of environmentally related educational uses as well as some other ancillary uses with respect to the care and maintenance of the property. Pursuant to the land use law, we were required to give notice to all properties that are within the RCW Zone District as well as all properties within 200 feet of the RCW Zone District. We noticed over 800 properties because the RCW Zone District appears in several locations in the town. As I said, this is being done primarily to address accessory use standards for those properties that are at least 200 contiguous acres under common ownership. So, the ordinance was essentially overnoticed for properties that are probably not directly impacted by the ordinance, but will certainly entertain public comment with respect to the ordinance in general. We're fortunate tonight to have Mr. Frank Banish, who was our special planner in connection with the matter in case there are any planning related questions.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Oh, okay. Robert Algeri, I'm on 39 Parkside Drive, it's the corner of Troy Meadow and Parkside. Have a ton of questions. First of all, I think that you guys sending this notice out at this time of the year with people on vacation, I got this on the 27th, I was away on vacation, my neighbor was getting my mail. I think a lot of residents are on vacation and not available to even show up here tonight. I think the timing stinks. Secondly, I mean, I don't know what this is about. Everything is so vague. There's no location, there's no footprint, there's no drawing, there's, you know, observation towers. What observation towers? You know, this is a totally, totally uninformative notification. I mean, if I built something in my yard, I need to notify you guys and get your approval.
I would respectfully disagree with you. The ordinance complies with the requirements of the-
Sir, do you have any other questions? Is that all your questions?
Well, I'd like to at least protect our real estate investments, okay? And see what you're proposing to put, where you're proposing to put it, and how it's going to impact us.
I just want you to ask all your questions so we don't take up your time answering.
Council President, I know this is the open portion, but if a brief presentation could be made by Wildlife Preserves or the planner, and then go back into the open session later, it might save, answer a lot of questions that are going to be asked over and over and over again.
I mean, there should be a master plan for the residents who have so much money invested and look at and approve or disapprove or see what this thing is going to be all about.
So, why don't we hear from our township planner for a minute about some of the planning considerations?
Can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
I can tell you now, we've been victims of quads, four-wheel drive pickup trucks, beating in and out of the streets, call the police 2 o'clock in the morning, and for some reason, they really don't like going behind there at Green Acres. The response has always been very slow and it's been a nightmare. There's people speeding in and out of Green Acres. And to be quite honest with you, when I read this, I couldn't imagine where they were going to put it and why they would put it there and not put it down in Green Acres past the pump house where it's really a nature site. Where they're proposed to put this, this is residential housing.
My name's Frank Banish and I'm the special planner that's been working with the town on resolving this issue with wildlife. I think you have to look at what's being done tonight in the context of what the RCW Zone already does. Right now, the zone includes permitted uses that are pretty broad ranging. The name of the zone, Recreation, Conservation, and Wildlife, opens the zone up in a way that has some active uses and some less active conservation oriented uses. And specifically, farming and tree nurseries are among permitted uses, but there are also more active uses like horseback riding, nature trails, picnicking, variety of things that have, are permitted today. This ordinance makes no change to those permitted uses. Also, ecology and nature classes are a category of less active uses. Today, the ordinance says that permitted accessory uses include customarily incidental uses that go along with those things I just mentioned. The settlement resolved the question about what accessory uses could be permitted with some very explicit permissions for very limited uses that are uniquely focused on the conservation and wildlife management aspect of the use. So, from the perspective of residents, I would think it would be encouraging to know that if there is an environmental education center, it can't be larger than 4,000 square feet, which is smaller than a hill. Well, when you say it doesn't help, the range of permitted uses.
Oh, wait, just please let him finish.
We'd like to see where it's going, a drawing of what you're proposing. We have no idea what you're even proposing. This is all quite vague.
Well, just for one thing, where is the entrance going to be for this?
I don't believe any of that has been resolved at this point. So, the ordinance establishes preferred access locations on Beverlywick Road and Troy Meadow Road. Exclusive access. That is to be determined. There isn't an application before the township now.
Well, I don't think, really, quite honestly, I've been a facility manager for 41 years in a large pharmaceutical company. I don't think you should be making any proposals until you have a plan.
You, go ahead.
I don't believe that the intent of this proceeding is for this to be a back and forth between me and a member of the audience.
No, I don't want it to be either, but-
Yeah, we're going to, what we'll do is-
I think I have a little more in stake than you do.
Yeah, but let him finish.
Let him finish and then we'll take more questions.
Yes, absolutely.
The zoning amendment is essentially enabling certain accessory uses, limited uses that are related either to the maintenance or interpretation activities on the site and they're low intensity uses. The fact that those uses are the things that the township has articulated in a settlement tells me that the intention is not to create a swim club or some indoor riding arena for horseback riding or any of those more active uses, that the intent is that if further development occurs, it will be along lines that have made sure these buildings will be a certain distance from neighboring residential property lines and that they will be very minimal in scale and effect on the property. But, they are not right now intended to go any specific place. The zoning enables a future use. This is not a response to an application, this is not a response to an application for development.
Right, but once the zoning is changed, you have a free hand to do whatever you like.
There is no free hand. When the zoning is changed, an application for a site plan to conduct any of these uses would come before the planning board and would have to conform to the zoning standards.
Do you have anything else?
I have nothing else to add, thank you.
I'm not happy with that at all. Okay, that's what I have to say, but really, I don't know how you can propose anything without a plan. It's beyond me. Thank you.
Len, you can just step up, sign in and speak, that's fine, but let this gentleman go first and you can go next.
Dave Kaplan, 263 Intervale Road. I live nowhere near this property, but I was noticed because I've got some RCW behind me because of the water view settlement. And I'm hearing a lot of potential concerns here, so I just want to share my perspective on this, having lived through a zone change or overlay or whatever it was called. We were promised a lot by the developer. One of the promises was, and they were charted here all over the place, we would never see this development from our properties. And they had these different surveys with lines going across and they proved to the council and they proved to the audience that we would never see the development. And you're laughing because you know where this is going. I would gladly invite any one of you to my house to look at the development that I was promised I would never see. And that's before they've installed the lights that they promised we would never see. So, as I hear these concerns here, it's just bringing back a lot of very negative memories of that experience, which was an awful experience. It dragged on for me since 2000, from 2005 to 2015. And I fought and I fought and I fought and some of you were there and lived it with me. And for those of you who weren't there, and I wish Mrs. Peterson were here to hear this, the residents really have a unique perspective and I would just implore the governing body to listen closely to the residents. And if they are feeling like there's not a lot of time for them, if it's possible, I would recommend that they get some time to come to their presentations. And I would agree, I knew nothing about this until I was noticed and I called Mr. Lot, who called me back. He was great, answered all of my questions, I appreciated it. But, I, even living three or four miles away, just had some concerns because as that gentleman said, the notice, by design maybe, it's a legal document, it's just very vague and it's very minimal. And if you've got a lot of questions and a big turnout, please listen to the audience. And if you have to postpone it, postpone it.
Yeah, I'm Len Ferriello and I'm the land manager for Wildlife Preserves. And there's a lot of confusion here. We are not here for a building proposal. This is a zone change. Our land was zoned residential, the township rezoned it to Recreation, Conservation, and Wildlife. It's very appropriate. It was an appropriate land decision, but the previous zone lacked viable building uses and resulted in a three-year court battle that cost Wildlife Preserves and the taxpayers of Parsippany hundreds of thousands of dollars. In the state of New Jersey, land value is based on what can be built, even if nothing is ever built. And the previous RCW zone lacked viable uses and reduced the value of Wildlife Preserves' land to pennies on the dollar. This isn't helpful for a nonprofit organization struggling to hold land in its natural state. By adding some permitted uses, the land gained some value and the lawsuit has been settled. This isn't a building proposal, it's just a settlement to add some viable uses to the land. It doesn't say we're planning to build anything, and I think that's where the confusion is, listening to Bob Alger, like we're ready to break ground on something. By settling the legal battle, Mayor Soriano and the council is saving the taxpayers of Parsippany hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal costs. And he's making peace with a philanthropic environmental land trust that spent 65 years saving land in the township of Parsippany at no cost to the taxpayers. Residents should be proud of the mayor and council and we're settling dispute that's raged on for four years since 2014, I believe. So, I just wanted to clear that up. It's not, this isn't a building plan. This is just to put some value back in our land that was taken away when the zone was changed. There's already lots of uses in the land that we can do. This isn't saying that we could build an environmental education center if we ever chose to do so, or have a ranger station, just a place where the rangers can put their boots on and go out on patrol. It's nothing more than that. It's not, if there's ever a plan, it'll be in the future and you'll be noticed and it'll be a site plan like Bob Alger was asking for, a location, and it'll go before the planning board and there'll be an opportunity to speak. But, this is just adding some viable building uses to a zone that already exists. And I hope that helped clarify what this is all about. Thank you.
Vince Aperewick, Forbroxide Court, Parsippany. In 2014, as only indicated, we voted on this to be an RCW. There were many questions asked about the intent of the Wildlife Preserve. Their mission at that time was not to build at all. They came before the planning board and asked for a rezoning. And we said, well, why? We were given the answer, because for tax purposes, a tax advantage. The question was asked at that time, do you intend to build? And the attorney representing wildlife said, not at this time. So, what I'm saying to the board, the council this evening is, we were lied to before. As far as I'm concerned, we're being lied to again. If their intent is not to build, then let them tell us that. Do you intend to build? Lenny? Do you intend to build on this property?
All right, sir, this is for-
All right, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, that's all I have to say. I take issue with his presentation tonight because I don't believe him. We were lied to before. Thank you.
Thank you. See no one else coming forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I think we have somebody in the back over here. Would you like to come up, sir?
Is it open now for any dialogue or just-
Just on this. Just on this, yes, okay.
Well, he missed it. He missed that special session, so.
Right.
We want to give him an opportunity.
No, it's just on this.
No, we're still in the public hearing for the ordinance, so we can probably come back to him after we're done.
Just sign in and after we're done with the public hearing, we'll allow you an opportunity to speak since you did come in late.
Right.
Council President, the accessory uses that are listed, could we read that into the record so they hear what the potential accessory uses are if they do apply for them before the planning board?
Sure.
Would you like me to do that or?
Sure, please.
Okay. So, the ordinance establishes standards for accessory-
So the ordinance establishes standards for accessory uses for properties that are in common ownership that consist of at least 200 acres. One, one environmental education center not exceeding 4,000 square feet, provided that the location be at least 150 feet away from any residentially zoned property adjacent to the RCW district. It defines environmental education centers as including but not limited to management offices, libraries, research facilities, classrooms, displays and other similar uses. It establishes a standard for one maintenance garage not to exceed 1,000 square feet in size and shall be located 150 feet away from any property line of any residentially zoned property adjacent to the RCW district. Establishes a standard for one ranger relief station for the staging of personnel and the housing of incidental equipment of not more than 850 square feet, which shall be located at least 150 feet away from any line for any, I'm sorry, from any lot line of any residentially zoned property adjacent to the RCW zone district. And establishes a standard for nature observatory structures that they be at least 150 feet away from any lot line of any residentially zoned property adjacent to the RCW zone district. And finally, it establishes a standard for public access to any development in the RCW district shall be made from either Beverwick Road or Troy Meadow Road.
Also, in regard to the 800 fair, 800 square foot provided for any improvements, said station shall not be used for dwelling purposes.
Correct.
That's something I think that it will not be housed for the ranger or any family members. It's strictly for the ranger to be there and to watch over the property.
That's correct.
He can't cut up again.
The hearing's still open.
Yeah, you might as well have.
I just want to say that I think everyone, everyone concerned here.
You have to come up to the microphone because it's recorded.
He's coming.
I wanted to say that everyone's concerned here that lives in the area, the main concern is location, location. Now, there's a site off of Beverwick Road called Patriots Path. There's great locations. Why try to put this in a residential area? There's so many other places it could go. And I think that's everyone's concern here, is location. I don't think, I don't have any personal feeling about not building it for any particular reason, other than to protect our neighborhood and our area. I've been broken into three times because it's so easy to do in our neighborhood, but it's just not the right place for it. If they're thinking about putting it where they're putting it, it's not fair to the neighborhood or the homeowners. There's plenty of places to put this thing, down Troy Road, down the bottom of Troy Road. That's it, that's all, my general feeling.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Melissa LaMelo, 1250 South Beverick.
You have to speak into the microphone so they can hear you in the back.
That's good. Called it.
Melissa LaMelo, 1250 South Beverick. So, a couple of questions. So my first question is, obviously there was some sort of legal argument over what the zoning of the property was.
Just please speak into the mic.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, there was some sort of legal conflict, right, around what the zoning of the property was? And that was resolved in the settlement to rezone the property. So I know that there's a lot of people.
Can you just speak into the mic, ma'am? Sorry.
Take it out.
Okay. So, clearly, you know, there's a lot of people who want to understand what it's going to look like, where it's going to be. Now, I know you had, the previous gentleman made a comment about putting it on South Beverick Road. I will say, as a resident and actually directly across the street from Patriots Path, it's not an ideal location at all, because first of all, there's traffic and second of all, it's, it would just, there's a lot of kids in the area, et cetera. So I guess my question is, if there is a proposal that comes through to build something, would there be an opportunity for maybe a sampling of residents to form some sort of committee to have input into what it looks like, where the exact location does? Nobody wants it next to their house, I completely appreciate that, but I haven't seen all the possibilities, all the opportunities, what could be an optimal solution? So, I don't know if that's something that's typically done, because I think people just typically submit plans to the township and then they get approved. But a lot of people have a lot of vested interest in this because it could potentially impact their property values. And I think the other worry that folks have is, what if it's not used for the intended purposes of trying to preserve that area? I mean, there's many nice things that maybe could be done, an observatory or a boardwalk so that people could optimize the use of that property. But I just, I don't want this to be, well, I don't want it on my block and I don't want it on my block. Like, what is optimal? What's best for everyone? Clearly, it's been resolved from a legal perspective. The zoning has been changed. We can't change that at this point. But how do we go forward and do something that maybe won't make everybody happy, but maybe would be something that everyone could kind of live with and feel like they've had some sort of partnership or some sort of input into what it turns out to be, if anything is decided to be built?
So just a couple of legal responses, you know, in, from a legal perspective, what we've done here is not rezone the property. The property has always been zoned RCW, all right? What we've done is, Mr. Banish indicates, is we've established some standards that better define accessory uses. In doing so, you know, the setback distances that I read, those are the minimums. Those are the minimum setback distances, all right? So any deviation from the minimum would have to require a variance, all right? Members of the public would certainly receive notice of any development application. For those peoples within 200 feet of the development footprint would receive notice of the application from the planning board. You would have an opportunity at that time to express your public comment. You know, we would certainly encourage, you know, neighbors to work with wildlife, should there be a development application filed. Now, that's, you know, that's kind of the, you know, the legal, the legal response to your questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
1284 South Berwick Road, Carol Demarsco. Just from listening to this, this is about conserving the land, right? So are we doing this for the animals? Are we conserving the turkeys? Are we conserving the deer? Are we conserving the fox that are in the only land that's left in Precipiny? Because Precipiny has been so built, there's very little land left. We have two acres. They built behind us, in front of us. Our land is now swamp. Where you're talking about building, I'm assuming is Troy Meadows? The whole area? Is that what we're talking about? Does everybody know that there's Lyme disease? It's completely infested with Lyme disease? So we want to put more people in there so they can get Lyme's disease and come out and be more sick? I don't think this is good. This is definitely not good for Precipiny. There's very little land left for the animals and we shouldn't be keep, like, building on everything. There's, there's nothing left. There really isn't. Our road on South Beverwick Road and Troy are both traffic. It's ridiculous. I mean, you can't get out at 6:00 in the morning, you can't get out 8:00 in the morning, you can't get out at 3:30 in the afternoon. It's, it's all the way from 46. The light from 46 all the way to the end of South Beverwick Road and Troy at 6:30 is backed up. So like, now we want to bring in more people. I'm very confused about this. And I don't think the town needs this at all.
Before you, before, in response to that, do we want to say that we're not talking about housing?
That's correct.
I mean, we're not talking about housing.
Right, that's.
That needs to be talked, said.
Right, that's absolutely correct. I mean, the zone district, the RCW zone district, does not permit residential use. As Mr. Banish explained, the zone district is, you know, primarily addressing the recreation, conservation and wildlife at use of the property. Housing is not a permitted use. If the owner of the property were to propose a use that was not permitted by zoning, they would require a use variance at the Board of Adjustment. That's a, that's a heavy burden, a heavy burden.
Sir, no, sir, you've already had your turn. We have to have other people now.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you've already.
I have a question based on what he was.
No, but we have rules here, so.
I'll answer the question.
Well, where is the RCW area that's zoned for building? Is it the entire Meadows or is it just Troy Meadow Road?
Well, as I explained earlier, the RCW zone district actually appears in several locations in the township, all right? I don't have the zoning map in front of me, but I think that, you know, wildlife is, owns 200 contiguous acres. I think most of that is what people would commonly call, you know, Troy Meadows.
Because I mean, it'd be helpful for the residents to know where the areas are.
Wildlife is really about 1,500 acres.
All total?
In Precipiny.
Right.
Well, I just thought it would be helpful if we knew what we were discussing.
It would have been helpful to have a map. I agree.
Absolutely.
Can we table this in anyway? Can we hold off on this? I guess we could. Can we have some sort of a, can we table it?
Well, if you table it, you're going to have to reopen the public hearing again.
No, why don't we do that? We seem to have a lot of, you know, questions from the residents and.
Maybe we could have some kind of.
I think some sort of.
Map or something up there.
Can I make a suggestion, if I may? We need a better presentation. The verbal is not sufficient. What we need is a map, a big map of Wildlife Preserve, to show the people what we're talking about.
That's it. Yeah, I think that would be a good idea.
Mr. President.
Can it be continued then to August 21st?
Yeah.
Why don't we do it to August 21st and have drawings?
Your questions that you're going to ask?
I have no question. I just have a comment.
Okay.
I just want to make sure that whatever gets established, I'm assuming what I'm hearing is something that would be a situation where people could learn about the wildlife, learn about the, not only the animals but the plants, but I also hope that if it does get established, that the prehistoric creation of it be made really clear. That was glacial, but before the glaciers, that was hot boiling earth where nothing lived. And as things grew and everything, the glaciers came down, that's what caused the meadows. That's what caused this huge, huge kind of divot where all of this meadows has been developed. That's neat in itself. But the next thing is that when the settlers came here, I've always been, I've always understood that this early, early settlers that came to this area went, this place is covered in trees. How are we going to farm? How are we going to live? But that huge area with only grass, yes, and they all split it up. My family inherited, I don't know, two and a half acres because they all split it up and they all got together. They ditched it to drain it. They went down there and they hate it. They dug holes to make, to find a spring. They chilled the milk there before the milk was then delivered to Newark. All that neat stuff needs to be, just as craftsmen farms, helps people to understand and really grasp where we live. That is not just the foxes and the turkeys. They're cool, but they're in anybody's backyard, I think. Possums and, and I had black vultures today, like five or six of them, landing in the middle of Troy Road. People didn't know what to do. But anyway, that's neat too. But I think that if it was a way of educating and exciting people about where we live and the history, way back history, that would be pretty cool too, so.
Thank you.
I think that would be great. Good idea.
Great idea. Thank you. But I think part of this is for the wildlife. There was going to be some observation.
Yeah, observation.
For.
Not yet. We still have other people.
No, no, no. He's talking about this.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Before you do though, can I just establish, just ask the question, just to clarify, we are definitely considering to continue the public hearing then to the 21st, so that we'd have drawings and designs and, and you can see the, you know, to say 150 feet. Yes, yeah, and it'll be clearer, you know, a picture.
Yeah, maybe some different kind of presentation.
Yeah, I think wildlife should.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Go ahead, sir.
I don't live in Precipiny currently, but I am looking to set up a sustainable farm in Precipiny. I think the location is pretty nice, being a crossroads of 80 and 287. And when there's land for consideration, I think it's important to think about how much usable land there is, farmland, how much oxygen the land that's in Precipiny is producing, if it's just asphalt, or what kind of business you're putting in there. But I have a small sustainable farm startup where I make organic soil by reducing waste streams. So I work with several businesses in Randolph and in Precipiny and a few other towns, collecting coffee grounds from Starbucks and some other places and other eggs from some places and just different things that normally go in the trash and I mix them together and use some proprietary processes to make a sustainable soil. A lot of it is just involved with, I used to be a master gardener, Rutgers certified master gardener for several years. And before that, I was a University of Illinois volunteer master gardener. So I come up with a lot of processes to sort of simplify and reduce carbon, which is a major problem for us as a earth. And, you know, when you're looking to start a business, I want to have a sustainable, environmentally sustainable and conscientious business. So the way that I process these wastes, rather than just making regular compost out of them, a lot of carbon goes into the air. With the wet processing, wet composting techniques that I use, the carbon stays in the soil, so it makes a more fertile soil and it actually collects carbon from the atmosphere rather than releasing it. So it produces atmospheric carbon, which is a big part of global warming. So I'd like to set up a business here doing that. And as land's getting harder and harder to find in Precipiny, you know, it'd be nice if I was able to set up my business here, because I think it would be good for the community to have an organization that's really looking to not earn profits necessarily, but more just to help facilitate and solve some of the problems that we have locally and globally. I used to be the teacher for Spectrum 360 and Independence 360. I created their horticulture program. And I'd like to go back to start taking some of them to train them and teach them to have them work to make our soil products and things, so that way they have trouble finding jobs. So it's not just sustaining the environment, it's also sustaining populations of humans that don't really get as much funding after they turn 21. So I'd really enjoy your support for Sweet Virginia Soil, which is a company I'd be excited to bring to Precipiny. Thank you very much.
Can you, can you give your information to?
Yeah, I would like, I would like the information because, yes, Coled, but I will, getting it from him, your information, because I would like to put you in touch with our recycling coordinator that does more than just recycling things. We also do a lot of mulching.
Mulching and yard waste and things like that.
And, and, yes, and we have a great, we have a great Parks and Forestry in the name of Jim Walsh, and we're doing a lot of that. So in concert with Greg Schneider, our Public Works Director, this fellow Chad, and also Jimmy Walsh. So I'll get and put.
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, because I am trying to form and get commitments and relationships with municipalities to be able.
Because we are doing a lot of that.
Yeah, I know, a lot of, a lot of communities are starting to now. On the West Coast, it's sort of become commonplace, but the East Coast is kind of just starting.
We're catching up.
And I'd like to help everyone to catch up here and maybe go further.
Yeah, absolutely.
But I do have business cards.
If you have a card, yeah.
Give that to the clerk down at the end.
All right, will do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Give them two.
Thank you.
This way I'll get a card. Thank you.
Hi, Julia Peterson, 25 old Precipiny Road. I wanted to go a little pre-2014. And the Historic Preservation Advisory Committee was very involved in this, pre-2014. And what was going on was there was a proposal to develop, I can't think, maybe five, maybe 10, maybe 12 more houses in the Allen Drive area and off of Parkside. And we were very concerned about archaeological remains that were there at that time. And we got very involved with what should happen there. And as it turned out, I think this legal suit was kind of a result of, I mean, Wildlife Preserves has done a really beautiful job preserving the Troy Meadows. The Troy Meadows is, as you say, it's over 1,500 acres. It's one of the largest pieces of unoccupied land in Precipiny. It's one of the largest pieces of unoccupied land in Parsippany. And while we want to see it preserved, we, when it was zoned, RCW, that was, the trade off for that was, okay, we won't build the houses. We won't monetize that land by building the houses. But what's in it for us? I don't know, I'm not party to any of the legal stuff at all, but I suspect that often settlements like these are a negotiated settlement between the interests of several parties, and that may be what happened here. And I think that it's probably true, that they haven't even figured, there's no, you know, they don't know where they want to put a building, but they don't want to continue holding 1,500 acres of land with no permission to do anything on it. So, that might be something to think about. I'm not, I'm not factually involved in it after 2014, but I know that our committee was very worried about the additional housing that would be built. And so, in that the housing is not going to be built, we all should be grateful.
Thank you.
Isn't there just, isn't it limited as well by wetland and things like that?
Once you've come up, sir, that's our rules, you can only come up once. You can't keep coming back.
Well, he cannot be for...
We're getting the other guy to come up all the time. So, what are we doing? Am I even getting up or what?
The lady that just spoke indicated that the houses are not being built. In 2014, plans were approved for building, and I've inquired about those plans since then, and I couldn't get an answer. So, as far as we know, houses are still going to be built, three or four, between Brookside Court and Troy Meadow Road. And this is what we took issue with before. So, I don't know whether your daughter...
Right.
Okay. That's my comment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Anita Shotwell, Managing Trustee with Wildlife Preserves. I didn't intend to say anything, and I promise you I'm not good at it, but I wanted to let you know, I personally come from an animal welfare background, speaking to the woman who was concerned about the wildlife, and spent more than 30 years in nonprofit before I started with Wildlife Preserves. And I can assure you that we have had no meetings with developers, no meetings with architects, no plans drawn up for the property, no plans for housing. There was some miscommunication back in 2014, which was actually my very first meeting with Wildlife Preserves, and it blew into some completely unexpected, well, I would expect, I guess, actually, with that residents would be concerned, but it was a misunderstanding. And this whole zoning thing spun out of control as a result of that. Now, our, you know, as a nonprofit, it doesn't behoove us to make enemies of the residents. The whole point is that we have a cooperative relationship with Parsippany and East Hanover residents, where we have another 500 acres. We have not been able to do that since I began, because we've been embroiled in a lawsuit over this zoning, which has only now begun to take sort of a more positive and collaborative term with this administration. We had a tree planting earlier this year in April, where some of the members of the environmental commission came out. We've had a few cleanup days and things of that nature. And we are happy to work with residents and happy to hear from residents about things that we can do to serve the community and make improvements. And if there is some time down the line where there would be discussions, and there, again, there are no plans for anything in the works, that would be something that would have to go through the planning board. People would have to be noticed. Plans should have to be drawn up. If you're asking for plans, the only thing you're going to get in three weeks that would be different from today, which might be helpful, is a map of Troy Meadows, and you can see how much Wildlife Preserves owns in Parsippany and how much we own in East Hanover, and you could see where setbacks or theoretically where road would be, access would be permitted to public buildings. But that's the only thing you're going to see, and maybe that is helpful, that will help people put minds to rest. But again, no plans in the works. I'm not saying that we never will, but that's something that is not, it's in the dream stage.
Okay, hold on, we can't have discussion with... Go ahead.
And again, we're interested in working proactively, and that was with the miscommunication in those plans for that residential, and that was something that I had not even seen as a trustee, and it was an error on the part of the attorney who does not represent Wildlife Preserves. That is someone who represented us for a very specific case, and we have not a plan for housing. Is that correct? Does I understand it? Yeah, so that, again, was a misunderstanding. I'm happy to talk to anyone at some other time and try to explain that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I think if you do come back, when you come back on the 21st, and have the map and possibly some of the articles that you want to build, the ranger station, the garage, if you can note where possibly they will be built, I think that will... I know you're questioning, you're giving me a questionable look, and I...
Jeffrey don't have plans, is my...
I understand that. I understand that. But we have this in our ordinance that things could possibly be built, and if you could give the residents and us an idea as to where they will be, I think it will be helpful to all.
They don't know where they...
They don't know.
Or if they could do...
They could do something, I don't know. These people are questioning everything.
Hi, my name is Roberta Melli. I'm at 38 Whitewood Drive, which is near the Mount Tabor Golf Course, and I, too, received this certified letter, and I don't know if this relates to us in any way.
No.
And so, getting, I got actually four certified letters about this meeting.
They wanted you here.
And I don't know if that has, you know, future...
You're the same situation as the other gentleman back there, just because you have some of that near you. You received that, but this has nothing to do with your, where you're at.
So, this isn't something I need to worry about, except for my township neighbors.
I got phone calls from people in Forge Pond that got notice for this, too, and I could explain to them that they were not involved.
Because it shows how vague the information is. I mean, I've been poring over the town's website, I've been trying to figure something out, and there's really no information, so I feel for these people.
I think, to be fair, to the people that do live over there, I think all of Parsippany residents need to be concerned about all of us, not just wherever we live. So, you know, we need to be...
I agree, but I see their frustration in not even having the information, a map or anything.
I agree with you.
This is really not the best way to present information.
I agree with you.
Council President, perhaps we could have Mr. Banish go ahead and prepare a map that shows the Troy Meadow area or those areas of township that are at least 200 acres in the RCW zone, and then we could plot out the minimum 150-foot setback distance, perhaps for the next meeting?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name's Tom Lund. Now, I'm just sitting back there. 1050 South Beverick Road. I'm sitting over in that corner, and I'm listening to people talk. Now, my property that I bought and I spent my life savings for, for my kids, is Green Acres. I step off my driveway, I'm in Green Acres. 150 feet off of that property line, that's nothing. You put a tower there, you can see my kids. It's kind of disturbing. Everybody's just a little frustrated. I understand that they don't have plans, I get it. I understand the zoning. I've worn many hats in my career of my life. You know, it's just frustrating. You guys have to understand, and he needs to understand, because I've seen his response on his face many a times, especially when the older gentleman in the back was talking. He giggled, he laughed. I didn't like that. I don't know you personally, you might be a great guy. I don't know. It's just a lot of frustrating. Now, there's ticks. Somebody said something about that. I agree, I walk in my backyard, I get ticks. I'm not even in Green Acres. My dog goes back, I get ticks. I have to spray pesticide to get rid of the ticks. That is a concern. Pull out of my driveway, there's traffic. I probably try to almost get hit at least twice a day trying to get my truck and trailer out of there. It's a tough street. I agree they should have a ranger station, something, somewheres on the property. I think it would be great. I walk those woods all the time. There's a lot of trouble in there sometimes. I've almost got hit by a quad. I've had my kids out there, they almost got hit by a quad. It's a tough situation. So, everybody's just very concerned about what's going to happen. Nobody wants this built in their backyard, but everybody wants to work together. I can see that on anybody's face. So, I think everybody just needs to take a step back and realize the fact that this is a good thing, but 400-square-foot building, scary. I don't want that next to my house. Nobody does. But it has to be figured out, and at this point, there's no plans, as I understand. And there's not, no sneaky thing that anybody's going to do, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's, I think that's everybody's concern. Everybody's afraid that, you know, that happened to me in Lake Hiawatha. I had a house, bought and paid for. Neighbor said, "Oh, I'm going to do a small addition." Wake up one morning, there's a tower next to me. Same thing on the other side of me. Same thing behind me. I had a little baby swimming pool with my daughter in it. I look up, I got a neighbor looking at me, a neighbor looking at me. It's kind of disturbing, there's my little girl swimming around in the pool. So, you know, just have to understand that nobody wants that in their backyard. I lived through it, and it's not good. So, that's all I have to say. And no disrespect, I just saw you giggle a couple times, and I just was... I saw you. My eyes work, my ears work, and I'm a good judge of character. So, when he was talking, you were laughing, and that wasn't good. So, that's why he got upset about it, and I just wanted to call out, and I wanted to thank you, because you cleared up a lot for me by coming up and talking, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, see no one else come forward to entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion. And the motion would be to carry the application, I'm sorry, the ordinance until the August 21st meeting?
Yes.
Yep. That's my motion.
First, we're going to do a motion to close the public hearing, then we'll do your motion.
Motion to close the public hearing for ordinance 2018-12 by myself.
And seconded by Mr. DePiro. Roll call. Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Floor is closed. Now, Councilmember DePiro, if you'd like to make your motion.
Motion to carry this hearing until our next meeting.
Second, Grignani.
Can part of the motion also be what will be our obligation to the public? Can it be stated, besides what you just said, Jim? Is there going to be anything more than a drawing? Will it be more of an explanation, you know, an explanation? And will we be able to do a PowerPoint?
Well, it'd be a good idea if we had a map of all of Wildlife Preserves, and then within that have a map of the RCW-zoned property that we're talking about now, and where that abuts residential properties would be appropriate.
And I can work with Mr. Banish to come up with a presentation for the next hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion... Motion by Mr. DePiro?
Second by Grignani.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Ms. Grignani, and the motion is to carry this hearing until what?
Our next meeting.
Next meeting. Until next meeting. Okay, roll call. Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes. This will be carried until the August 21st meeting.
And since we're carrying this, there's no further notice required.
Correct. Thank you, Councilmember. Okay, Mr. DePiro, non-consent agenda, resolution 2018-139.
Resolution 2018-139, resolution of the Township Council of the Township of Parsippany-Troy Hills authorizing the application to the Complete Streets Technical Assistance Grant Program. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DePiro, seconded by Mrs. McCarthy. Roll call, Mr. DePiro?
Yes.
Ms. Grignani?
Yes.
Ms. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Carriffy?
Yes.
Motion passes.
R. 2018-140, resolution of the Township Council of Parsippany-Troy Hills confirming the appointment of the Township Public Defender and awarding contract for professional services to John Paul Velez Esquire for the year 2018.